Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Southwest Regional Tech Center Board for April order. First item on the agenda, public comments. Is anybody online on Zoom at all?
Just our board members, Jackie and Leon.
Do you have a public comment from Leon?
Okay, go ahead Leon.
I want to personally thank the graphic art teacher, Elizabeth Kane. Excellent work that she did with the students in preparing on March 19th, which was a month of the Kane celebration. And they prepared artwork and presented it to the group at that meeting. And one prize, dash prize was awarded to them. So from the career development, I mean from the organization. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have a presentation on the Culinary Arts Department. This is something that the board members had asked, is that when we meet, if we could during the time meet with various like forestry program, auto mechanic, cosmetology, so we'll know what goes on in those various departments. They don't have to be long, but just to get face to face with the teacher and hear a little bit about the program. So that's what we're waiting for today. And don't forget, you can enjoy these beautiful meal, pastry that the department has made.
Anyone here? Yes. Hello everyone.
Hello.
First, I want to say thank you all for coming because this gives us, our students, a very real world experience. Setting up for business style meetings is something in the industry that is key and vital. You know, don't go in the dining room while they're meeting. You know, that's a real thing. So I thank you all for coming and allowing us to do it here because it really helps. So as way of introduction, my name is Nick Solari. I'm the new culinary arts instructor here at Southwest Tech. I come from Vermont and was born and raised in Rutland. I was a tech student at one time myself, then went to CIA, Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park, New York. I spent a few years on Nantucket, working on Nantucket, came back, was the executive chef at the Rockton Panther in Manchester. And then I have been one of the co-owners of the Vermont Butcher Shop for the last seven years. And now I'm here. So great. Short and sweet about myself, but that's the gist. Things we've done this year is the biggest one is we kind of upgraded our ServSafe IRC. So we used to do Food Service Handler in the past. This year we moved, we upgraded to the Food Service Manager, which is a Level 2 IRC instead of a Level 1. And we're happy to report that all students passed that test and are now ServSafe certified. It's good for five years and it's recognized nationwide as a credential for managers within the industry. So it really helps to open some doors for them. The next one is bistro. Because of COVID, bistro was a little limited, obviously. We weren't able to open to the public for understandable reasons. But we opened a variation. We started doing soup, sandwiches, sauces, pizza, desserts, cookies, all sorts of things right here at the bistro, right off the bar here, doing to faculty and staff, which I think has been pretty positive and the kids have really enjoyed it. But also allows us to bring a real world aspect to deadlines and all the things we're learning. All of those items are within the Pro Start curriculum that we follow as essential skills. So all of those things are now being produced by the children as essential skills for the Pro Start. So we also did pie sales, holiday pie sales. We did, what did we do? Pumpkin, apple. We did a mixed berry. We did walnut. I'm forgetting one, but we did pie sales and that went very well, I thought. So again, another essential skill for them to know pie dough, lattice work, fillings, all that kind of stuff. So we also did holiday cookies around Christmas time. So the creaming method is a baking essential. And anytime you make a cookie, you're doing the creaming method. So we did a wide variety of cookies and I think those went well as, those sold well as well. Right now, we're working, Culinary One is currently working on food insecure instructional videos through a partnership with the video production program. So we're learning all about the presence of video making within the culinary world. Things within social media in today's age, video production, photography, all that is very important in our industry. So it's a great opportunity to get some community outreach, but also to give them some experience with, you know, one of our buildups to it was making short videos about making a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, which some kids use social media and stuff like that to do an instructional video on how to make it. So it's really helping, I think, them get out of their comfort zone a little bit because, you know, they're the ones making the recipes and all that. But again, a good community outreach option. As far as curriculum goes, we are doing Pro Start as we have done in the past. Culinary One is focusing on basics. I've incorporated some of the CIA trainings that I have that Pro Start doesn't really cover. Things like restaurant history is in there. So we learn about the foundations of cooking and the people that made it what it is today. As we said before, we do ServSafe, we do product ID, flavor profiles, stock soup sauces, basic culinary math, bread making, kitchen basics, cooking methods, salad dressings and sandwiches, starch cookery. And then the last one we'll do, starting next month, is kind of like industry professional development. We'll make resumes for all the kids and we'll talk about interview tactics and things like that. In future years, I hope to bring in our advisory committee to do mock interviews with the kids, which will allow them to get kind of the butterflies out. So Culinary Two is focusing on kind of what I call the beans of a chef, right? So you do food cost and menu development, recipe cost, breakfast cookery, baking and pastry, meat and seafood ID, gardege, cuisines of the world, front of the house service, and then finally interim management and purchasing options and things like that. So we focus on more of the nitty gritty, a little bit more classroom work there. But they're really focusing on also the bistro aspect as well. Kind of taking their teachings from Culinary One, moving those into Culinary Two and putting them to real world applications. Culinary Three will be a new, I guess, a new program for next year. And we're going to try to focus very much on the individual. You know, there's only one or two of them. So I want to focus on the individual rather than a curriculum. You know, if this student is interested in baking, we're going to push baking, right? If they're interested in culinary arts, we'll push culinary arts in one way or another. But I think it's safe and a good way to build it around their interest and to really expand on what they want to do within their profession. So we have two right now signed up for next year. One is very interested in baking, so we'll be going deep into that. And then the other one's kind of still playing the middle game. So we'll try to focus in on what she wants to focus on and kind of take the beginning of the year, kind of narrow that down, and then move into the second half of the year where we'll really focus on. What else do I got? So through our Pro Start affiliation, we are accredited, with one, two, three, four, seven schools in the New York, New England area. Just recently, one of my students signed up for SUNY's Connected E. Received eight college credits and was able to skip the ServSafe, food safety and sanitation class, all in general, because of his certification. He's now super excited because he only has to go to class two times a week for his entire first year. So he's very excited about that. So it's good to know. But the other schools involved are SUNY Cobalt School, Niagara Falls Culinary Institute, Morrisville State College, Culinary Institute of America, Culinary Institute of New York Monroe, and Tompkins Courtland College. So all of those colleges recognize our Pro State curriculum and offer some sort of college credit or through the ServSafe, they will just waive that class in general as long as they're served on. So next year, we'll wrap it up next year. We want to expand on our bistro. We definitely want to open up to the public, get the people back in here, get to the line experience, you know, fulfilling orders, things like that. But also having kids out here, you know, servicing the tables, et cetera, so that we can get that aspect integrated into the program. This year, we did Skills USA as our CTSO. Have a report, we got three medals for the program. We got silver in culinary arts, bronze in baking, and silver in job demonstration. So one of my students went and taught how to make mayonnaise to a panel of judges. So it's good. Next year, we're going to continue to do ServSafe. But I really want to start, see if we can get back into the Pro Start thing as well. I decided not to do it this year just because it was kind of a lot of juggle. But there's a few more ideas that I'm working on with Lisa about credits and things like that for the students, but they're kind of very early days. Thank you Nick. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have one question.
From the Al, it's Leon.
I have to say that I got to come over as soon as we get a chance, Leon. And I have to tell everybody at the end, because Laura's dad and I have been officiating basketball for 38 years, baseball too. And so he was a baby when we were playing around a long time ago. And so he told me to make sure I got some of the stuff that he prepared. And so I got to drive over. And I just want to thank you all of you who stuck up. So that's the most important thing.
Thank you very much. I'll let him know he told me. Thank you. I'll get some stuff for you Leon, I'll drop it off.
Get some pastries.
All right, you heard it here, record it on camera. All right.
Next item on the agenda is executive session for labor relations with employees' contracts, 10 minutes. So we're going to ask anybody that's not a member of the board to reuse themselves. They can just go out the door there. We shouldn't be more than, what, 10 minutes at the most, right?
I wouldn't think that long, yeah.
March 14th. Do we have a motion?
The move is a second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Next, payroll warrants, 10:14, 10:35, 10:37.
I'll move them.
Okay. Second. Okay, Leon, second. Any discussion on the payroll warrants? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Vendor warrants, 10:34 and 10:36. Motion to... Leon, excuse me. Fran, second?
Second, second.
Okay, second. Any questions on these? Anybody have any questions on the vendors? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, committee reports, none, no committees have met. Action items, we had a discussion on the contract and executive session. Do we have a motion to accept that contract?
So move.
Second.
Okay, this contract is for our business manager, Becky Tadexall. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Please jump right to me. Take my mask off so make sure everyone can hear me okay. First off, good to see everyone in person again. It's nice to be here. Masks are optional for students and guests here at school. That's why I'll see some people wearing them and some not, but it is totally optional at this point. The first thing, I hope we all look at the link of the course catalog and program of studies that was sent along. If not, there are copies online and at least some printed ones in the office. It's been a long time since we've talked about redoing our program of studies, actual complete rewrite from beginning to end. And we did that this year with the great help from Betsy Kane's graphic arts class and Anna Hogan, who worked closely with Nicole Sauer, who's our outreach coordinator to develop brand new program of studies that has included, which has beautiful photos in it, links to all the educational standards, work-based learning opportunities. I hope you've seen it. If not, you can pick up a copy in the office or go online and look at it. I can't show it to you here today because we don't have all the equipment we're used to in the assembly room. Otherwise, I would show it to you. It's a beautiful document and we're really proud of it. And a lot of hard work went into it. So that's online for you to look at. The next piece, I'm going to throw it over to Becky in a minute regarding the financial management letter. But a couple of things I wanted to talk about first. You heard Nick talk about our Skills USA, which just occurred last week. This was the first year that Skills has been in person in two years. Wasn't the traditional in person that we're used to. We're used to putting everyone on a big bus and sending them all to one location. This time it was a class here, a class there, a class here, a program there, a program here overnight, a program there overnight. So it's been a challenge to get everyone to their right places and back in time. But we managed it and you heard from Nick and other programs as well that we did receive numerous medals, both gold, silver, and bronze in many categories. And I don't have the list right in front of me. And it will be published in the banner as well as online and in the news guide. Where you've been seeing those student profiles, you'll see those in the news guide as well. Also, our student awards banquet. Believe it or not, we're coming up on that in June. We are still working on a date. We have picked a venue, I think, but it's under cloak and dagger right now. So it will be the first week in June is when the event will be, late night Tuesday or Thursday. So that should give you a good idea of the two dates that are available. Let you know more about that. We're excited to have it in person this year. For folks, the remote version has been great and everyone got to see it. And we're still going to record it and rebroadcast it on Facebook later on. But it will be live this year in person. We're really looking forward to that and hoping we can stay in person for as long as possible, would be our goal. So we're really looking forward to that. And just if you take a look, like today Ken mentioned, we're going to start having programs presented to the board. We started this before COVID hit. I think it was Mr. Haskins, Tom was here. Now Nick, next month, I forget, we have scheduled it for you. And then June, we're going to see graphic arts. So I forgot who I asked next month, but I will find out. And I hope you enjoy it. And some of them will go to them and some of them coming to us because there are better things to see. But we're right in the middle of culinary here, so we thought, no time to move today. Signups for next year are happening. This is our big recruitment season and signups are starting to begin. We have a lot of signups for 10th graders this year. For some reason, ebbs and flows, I don't know why. But most programs are doing very well as far as enrollment goes. We are seeking through our Perkins Grant, potentially a secondary medical professions instructor based on the amount of waiting enrollment from last year. And that's sort of, be right in front with you, it ebbs and flows. We may have a huge number right before school starts and it could wane again. So it is going to be grant money that we're looking at. We are also looking at hiring, this is old news, but just a reminder, a math interventionist that is being paid for by the state of Vermont through our Perkins money, based on the scores in which our students have tested in math and English, for example, are very low. So we are required to have a math interventionist on staff. We're starting interviews for that the week after April break. There are two candidates who applied. As you know, we do have a new forestry instructor who started last month. Eric Bishop is his name. So far, so good. It's nice to have an instructor in there. I want to say thank you to Linda Dvitsky and Brian Foster, who were our pair of professionals who spent a lot of time in there making sure the program continued on with guest instructors until we brought an instructor on board. On our manufacturing program, we're still looking for an instructor. Tim Mullin, who has been in there this year, was granted a provisional license basically to teach for the year. We're still advertising, it's been very difficult to fill. Just, we've had a couple of interviews and things just have not panned out. So we're going to continue to try our darndest to get that filled for the fall. Keep trying and trying and trying because it really has become troublesome. Kids want to be in the program, students are starting to enjoy what's happening, the welding, the machining. Got to find somebody for them. So we're going to keep doing that. That's it for me for now. The financial management letter?
Included in the packet in Dropbox was a letter from our auditors. Every year, our financial statements are audited, table, vendor, vendor board. Everything we do financially for the previous year. So this letter represents our FY '21 school year, last year. And every year we are audited and then they produce a paper report and then this letter. And basically I included it to show you, again, they didn't have any findings where there was anything wrong, anything we've done wrong. Definitely are adhering to all regulations financially. We are making sure that there are checks and balances, that no one person has overseen and controlled all finances, that there are things in place so that other signatures or approvals are required. So I included this just so you can see the letter from our auditor. Basically, it says things like constant income transactions have been recognized in financial statements in the proper period, that we were cooperative and provided all information to them, that they haven't found any errors or any discrepancies in anything related to any of the financial documents or procedures that we've done for the FY '21 school year. And every year this document is provided and there's a larger report. It's 56 pages long. If you want to take a look at it, I do have a hard copy here. It's available to you, it's available to anybody that wants to request it. But rather than making multiple copies of this 56 page report, I have one here for you if you want to take a look at it. But it goes into more depth about the financial standings of this school. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Just want to say nice job Becky. I know that the audit is something that's stressful each year and requires a lot of work on the business office part to get done. A lot of documents have to be submitted to the board, so thank you. The end by report.
Okay, now, under mine, we had something in the packet about the rental of the daycare center.
No.
But we want to run that through the finance committee first before we put up an official recommendation. So I think it'd be convenient if we set up a meeting of the finance committee.
Yes, if you'd like, you could do that right before the next board meeting, through a finance committee meeting.
Oh, that's good. 9:30?
Maybe at 9:30 or something?
Yeah.
That would work for folks.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, let's do it that way, that's good.
Right in here then, 9:30.
Okay. That's all I have. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to bring up now?
I have a question, Ken. It's for Mike. Were you advertising for the manufacturing position?
Oh boy. Sandy, you can just...
I'm sure it's a lot of... Really? Yeah, okay.
We tried to go, Bertie, Betty's in the post in our paper, the Seratogen. Floyd, the one news guy. Yep. That goes out quite a bit.
Right.
Has a very good reach outreach to our communities. We tried various publications at different times and we just aren't getting help schools for it.
Right, right.
It does not see any response. If anyone has any other suggestions, we would love them on there.
I just didn't know if we were getting anybody. I mean, yeah, a couple, but not, okay, not much. All right, I got you.
A lot of the school's brand, which is a website for mostly teachers as far as the committee. We are also advertising a book called Olas, which is a New York version. And we were hoping, because New York has a lot of, whatever it is, career and second centers or schools over in New York, we were hoping maybe we might find a teacher or someone who might be looking to kind of pick back up again. Like have any ready people come back to on their website as well.
And we even posted in the local colleges, like in Hudson Valley. If you can think of it, we've put it out there.
Oh God, it sounds like you got everything covered.
I don't know, we also look, I mean, we've really tried everything. You know, a lot of it comes down to either lack of experience or salary or going back to school for four years. I mean, there's multiple factors. You know, some people we've interviewed just like, the four years of schooling is too much and some folks, it's not enough money. And you know, it's just the way it is. I mean, but the better answer to your question, Fran, we don't have like 30 applicants. No, there may be two, you know, of all those places, so.
Although Indeed might get a bigger pool, maybe that's bigger pool for Indeed.
Yep, so the papers that we do advertise through feed to Indeed because that's when we ask them, when we interview, where'd you see the job? Where'd you come across them? I don't know where I found it. So our advertising dollars are making sense. And this last time, they said, no, I found it on Indeed. We're like, okay, but we didn't advertise on Indeed, so we looked at the paper fed it. So it is, it's out there everywhere. So it's tough. It's just tough.
And I also think that a big problem is places like MacMolding throwing $3,000 sign-on bonuses.
Bonuses, yeah.
And if you had mentioned that around $40,000 would be the starting salary.
High 40s probably, yeah.
That's a tough, with rental of apartments and automobile. I mean, it's tough for someone to get that job.
We still have, you know, we still have a few months and we'll keep trying. You know, it's not for lack of trying, we'll just keep going at it.
Right, right.
You know, we have five or six more months before we need somebody, so hopefully we can...
Maybe Adam could steer some.
Maybe. I'll talk to him.
Anything else?
I'd like to know whether we're going to...
Policy is Leon's bailiwick there.
Well, I wasn't clear. That was one of the things that I was going to ask in terms of the members. I saw the sheet that was attached, it had Chuck Mead and Dane, Charles on it rather, and Dreane, Dane. Does that, under that, does that mean that they are, you put them on the committee as well? With what? I just couldn't understand what you were trying to say here for that. And the other part of that was to make, the meeting times were to be based on the availability of Mr. Lemson because we have outstanding work already that needs to be brought and submitted to the board for approval.
So you mean, you have the committees that folks either ask for and that will put on, right? So.
Did you want to try and set up a meeting date, Leon, for this?
Well, yes, if we're going to meet doing in person, we're going to... I think Sandy told me something about the time that we talked about last semester, last quarter for our advisor to be available for us. And so that's the time that we want to set a meeting up and be in person. So is that going to be immediately following this meeting? That we would have, when we have the in-person meeting, that we have an in-person policy meeting?
Yeah, and I can talk with John after the meeting. I think that's when his availability is, is about now. That's after our board meeting. So I will talk with him and come up with what time works best for John and then, you know.
Okay, and then we can schedule that meeting and let everybody know we're going to try to do that in person.
Yep.
I have to apologize, I sure didn't realize we were going really in person here. And I looked at everything.
I would like to point out that I do take time off of my day job where I work at a different school. So these policy committee meetings, like it happened like right after these meetings, full meeting, that's what I've scheduled.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yep, try to take everyone's time as best as possible.
Any other topics to be brought up? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.